I was just looking at the clock.
Oh, it's a pause. I paused it.
May not be starting this meeting. We'll just wait until it turns streets are blocked, right? But that is so crazy.
Somebody call up the mayor.
Oh, that's awesome. All right, are you ready, John?
Not yet.
No, you guys go ahead. I just have to try to connect while you do that. All right. We would like to welcome everybody out to our Planning Commission meeting on September 6, 2022. I'd like to excuse Commissioner Georgie, and we'll go ahead and get started with a Pledge of Allegiance. If you please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the first thing on our agenda is the Near Lake Village Richard Brighton PUD application for KT 268B1 located at 100 West, 200 North. Amanda, do you have a staff report?
I do.
All right, we have the Near Lake Village for a PUD application. At the previous June 7 Planning Commission discussion, the Planning Commission members were in favor of Mr. Brighton moving forward to a PUD application. The consensus was to have a little less density, but overall in favor of the direction of the project. Mr. Brighton has adjusted this project from 64 townhomes, townhome units that were duplexes down to 48 units that are duplexes. This brings the density from 16 units per acre down to 12 units per acre in comparison to the townhomes on 200 East, since we've been talking about those. Those have about 12 and a half units per acre. Additionally, all parking spaces have been converted into garages with driveways. This project has 1.05 acres of open space, roughly 26.3%. There are two different building styles that are being proposed with varying worth that it is per lot. In terms of CCNRs, we haven't yet seen the details on what will be proposed, but we would require the CCNRs to be drafted in conjunction with any approval of this PUD. Lastly, under 1503-010 subsection 6, it states that considerations no zone change request that involves an increase of residential density will be granted by the city council unless at least 20% of the increased density is dedicated to moderate income housing. Under the moderate income housing ordinance, it states that the definition is owner occupied dwelling units that are offered for sale at a rate that is affordable to households having incomes that are 81% to 120% of the AMI. Affordable means paying no more than 30% of the household's income to housing costs, including utilities. Based on the housing data that was sent from Summit County, the unincorporated and incorporated AMI is 113,924, with the 81% to 120% being 92,300, ranging from 92,300 to 136,700. Kansas City's AMI is 82,115, with the range being 66,500 to 98,500. At the low end, this means that housing is affordable if the family spends up to $20,000 a year on housing costs. At the high end, it would be about $41,000 a year. It is for the Planning Commission and the city council to decide whether the project as proposed satisfies this requirement. Tonight, the Planning Commission shall vote to approve the proposed concept and to schedule a hearing on the potential final approval of the PUD rezone, preliminary plans, and development agreement. There are a couple of motions that I put out there that you could consider. A proposed motion to approve may look like, "I know that the Planning Commission approved the proposed PUD application to advance to a public hearing on final approval of the PUD." Planning Commission can add stipulations or conditions on this approval to give directions to the applicant on details the Planning Commission would like to have resolved prior to final approval. Proposed motion to deny, "I know that the Planning Commission denied the proposed PUD application."
Thank you. Scott, do you have some information for us as well?
Yeah. Just some general things. We need to get written approval for this out to the fire district. They'll figure out by place, see what kind of fire agents and stuff they want, push in the development if they want any. They'll need to provide a location to the community mailbox approved by the postmaster. Water, they're going to have a water line that runs through their development. It'll connect on 200 North and then connect on 100 West. They'll determine their required water shares for the project. The sewer, there's an existing sewer lot over the step to the northwest corner, not where the proposing connects. There is an existing sewer reason to cross the property from 200 North to 100 West. It'll need to be maintained. It appears that the clients do not interfere with the existing easement. They're going to access the project from 100 West and 200 North. Relatively, the traffic study is part of the preliminary approval. The storm drain, the storm water will be retained on site. There's an existing storm water that comes from a downtown, probably to deal with. Other than that, most of the project they have to have, no design, no design contracts.
Perfect, thank you, Scott. All right. Rick, do you or any of your team have anything you'd like to add?
Please vote yes.
Thank you, is that all?
We did everything you asked.
Well, I think we have a, I have a couple of questions. I don't know about my fellow commissioners. Who wants to start this discussion?
I'm bored.
Me? Okay. All right, so a couple of my questions. Amanda, number one, you have in the staff report, we'd like, we need CCNRs to be drafted in conjunction. Does that need to happen before we actually approve, or how does that timing work?
No, that would get, that would go with the final PUD approval. So if you vote yes tonight, then they'll work on the CCNRs and development agreement.
Okay, so the process is we either approve or deny the application, is that what we're doing?
Yeah.
And then it goes to city council, or not yet?
It wouldn't necessarily go to the council, although I've talked to Rick about this today. This ordinance that we have for the PUD is pretty hard to interpret. So Rob and I have been doing our best to understand what the interpretation is. So that's why tonight we thought this should, this next step should be a PUD application, where you guys vote to see, you know, is this, is this something you're interested in advancing forward here? What comments or concerns do you have as it stands? And then it would come back to you guys for final PUD and we'd go to city council. However, I don't know if there is a step where it should go to city council before that, so I'll ask Rob.
When they spend that much time and energy and money.
Yeah, yeah, which is what Rick and I were talking about today. So I'll clarify that with Rob and see if he needs to, we need to stop by city council.
So basically, tonight we would be approving the application that we are okay with what they propose?
Yep.
And with certain conditions, right?
Yeah.
And then they would come back to us with the final plan?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Now I know. Thanks, guys, for bearing with us. All right, so a couple of things that I had looking.
Excuse me. While we're talking about that, in the staff report, you mentioned to advance to a public hearing. And so is that an intermediate step?
No, that will be the final PUD, is a public hearing.
That's the public hearing.
It does sing kind of backwards, huh?
I mean, yeah. No, I'm just, I'm just saying that it's, we're still going to go to all the work. It's just kind of like, of course, I'm used to that.
Perfect, then. All right, so one of my questions was, why did we change to duplexes versus fourplexes? How good?
I'm supposed to say that?
Sure, tell us who you are, standard.
Hi, I'm Rick. Mr. Brighton, whoever you, whatever you want to call me. What happened is when we, on our last scheme, we didn't have covered parking. We had a bunch of parking, we had three spaces per unit. And when we got into the sales aspect of these, you know, are we going to be a condominium? Are we going to be, how are we going to deal with this? And so we decided that having these attached garages would solve a bunch of problems. Number one, it solves the garbage problem because now you just put your trash cans out, you don't need dumpsters. So we made that goal. Also, solved the handicap space issues because now you can park in the driveway and in the garage. So now we have four cars per unit, we're overparked by a fourth. So we've solved the parking problem. And those two things alone, we felt like would make this a better project from a sales standpoint. Plus, we can have lot lines and we can sell the ground underneath. We don't just have to sell the unit and then have common ground, which solves some of our CCNR problems. I mean, there were just so many little nice things that happened by going this direction. And it just made all the sense in the world. And we dropped the density down to 48 units from 64. So everything just kind of fell into place. And we feel like this is what you were telling us. The mayor even told me thank you, which I thought was really nice. I haven't ever gotten a thank you from a mayor before. So that is the evolution of our process. And we just, I want this to be the best project that it can possibly be for the city campus. I just do. Because if it's successful, then I, I can, I can go on.
So I'm assuming, based upon your comments, that now we are on a full sale project?
Well, we, you know, I'm going to keep a duplex and maybe rent half. You know, we don't have to sell them all, but you know, that was kind of the idea, is that we can make them saleable. So, you know, there you go. Just neither or.
But you're not planning on having like a, what would you call that in a project? Like they have the little apartment where you go in and lease and?
No, no, these are strictly side by sides. And they're around 2,000 square feet apiece. And they're basically three bedrooms and, you know, two and a half baths and potentially three and a half baths, but we're trying to keep the cost down, so.
So the units that will be the moderate income housing, are they going to be just spread out throughout? How are they going to be?
We, we're addressing that as we speak. I think we're going to have to deal with Rob on that. Amanda, to figure out how that works.
But you understand the requirement, right, that the Kansas City requires?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
We, we do, I just, that's.
Still working out the details.
That's, yeah, that's beyond my pay grade to figure that out. Attorneys to do that.
Were there, was there anything in Scott's letter of things that need to be done that are an issue?
From Scott's standpoint? I don't believe so, do you? And this thing is just tailor made to, or everything's just right there, so.
Okay, and then I didn't see, and maybe this, is the storm drain piece, is that where you plow your snow into? Because I know we talked about having, you know, the common areas and having somebody come in and take care of sidewalks and snow plowing and all of that. Is there, is the storm drain where the extra snow guns?
Well, we have two water retention areas, which are probably going to be where we put the snow on site. If it gets too excessive, we'll truck it. I mean, and that's going to be a contract deal for the HOA. And we, we're trying to figure out, you know, exterior maintenance, landscape maintenance, those kind of things. Those will all be addressed in the CCNRs. So.
Awesome.
One question. So was able to work anything out with people or Provo City on water usage on that?
You know, I kind of abandoned that based on the fact that everybody said that they didn't really want it. And I'm, I'm just, I'm a little security conscious with that fence because I'm surprised there haven't been some issues with grantings and things already. We look at it a little bit like liabilities, so.
I'm just curious about that conversation.
I didn't see, I know we had talked a little bit about visitor parking. And are you thinking with four and being overparked that that would compensate for no visitor parking?
Well, we have basically two per unit and two in the driveway. So that's our theory, is that that should more than handle what the code is, so.
And your CCNRs will cover that you can't have?
Yeah.
Jump broken down demolition derby cars?
All demolition derby cars will be towed. In fact, we know right where they go.
Right?
They're going home. They're going home. Back to the rip floaters.
All right. Did you guys have, one of the questions, comments, did you guys have? Answered, must have been mine.
Yeah, my, my comment, when I actually seen the plan, was thank you for actually listening and dropped it from 64 to 48 was thank you. It's, to me, it's a much more viable project, it's much cleaner. It doesn't look like we just kind of tried to throw as many houses as we ever could. And it just looked, when I seen it, I was, thank you.
Well, we just need to make it work. You know, if it doesn't work, it's not going to work for anybody, so.
Commissioner King, do you have questions?
I really don't. I, I looked it over and similar comment of, it looks like you've addressed what we talked about. And so thank you for that effort. The one concern I have is something that will take its course with the fire department. But it looks to me like pretty tight terms for large emergency vehicles on a couple of those corners. But they'll address that and give you that input needed there. Other than that, I, I didn't see any concerns that I had at this point.
Thank you. That's my line.
I guess I'd reiterate the same thing. I think it looks good. I wish more of the team would ask for our suggestions, would do what you've done and take them and run with them and come back with something that I think we all like, so. As opposed to keep trying to make changes that we don't want, so it's nice to.
I'm on my fifth scheme, so I massaged it pretty good.
Appreciate it, I think it's something.
Well, if you do what everybody else tells you to do, then it's supposed to get approved, right?
We appreciate that. Usually we stay cut down on the density and we can get more. All right, any other comments? All right, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I wouldn't make a motion that the Planning Commission approve the proposed PUD application, to advance to the public hearing on final approval of the PUD, with the condition set forth in the staff and with Provo City in the air.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion by Rex, second by Larry, who will take a vote, too.
All right. Bye.
And I'm going to deny as well. So, thank you. We'll see you in however long it takes you to get your stuff together.
Wait a minute. I don't know what happened.
All right, moving on to our next agenda item. Discussion regarding addition and regulation of short term rentals. All right. Amanda. Hey, Tom, will you do me a favor? Will you pull those doors closed because the sun is like, when they walk out, oh, close. All I can see is the sunlight. All right, Amanda, do you have a staff report?
Yes.
Tell you what, doors are really bad.
Thank you, Tom.
All right. This is a continued discussion on nightly rentals. This topic has been before the commission in several forms, both look at allowing and prohibiting nightly rentals. The public hearing was held on September 7. The last discussion on October 5 was to look at some reports generated by Summit County, speak with Park City, and look into a management website. Based on the request from the Planning Commission, I spoke with both Park City, Summit County, as well as the GOOS software that both of those parcity and Summit County uses. As far as Summit County goes, there's very little management over short term rentals at the moment. They do require business licenses for short term rentals and the fire department is supposed to inspect the units. However, enforcement is difficult and can really only be managed by neighborhood complaints. Summit County Assessor's Office uses a management post to collect data and they, and they use that really only to establish primary versus secondary residences, not for enforcement of the short term rentals. In the staff report, briefly released on May 11 of 2022 from Summit County discussing short term rentals, it discusses the statistic over short term rentals in Utah and the increase of 38.4% over the last four years. In Summit County alone, 21.5% of the housing consists of short term rentals. Summit County leads the state in short term rental listings. Summit County has seen a jump in the number of listings from 2019 to 2022, which brought on the discussion for a moratorium that ultimately seems as though it's either been tabled or rejected. The staff report can be found in Dropbox for reference. In Dropbox, you will also find the community profile in Kansas City as well as abstract data. Some of the community profile information says the 2021 housing units are about 785 in Kansas City. Owner occupied housing units were 72.2%. Renter occupied housing units were about 17.8% and vacant housing about 10.1%. 2022, 779 homes, owner occupied housing units 73.2. Renter occupied jumped up to 21.7 and vacant housing down to 5.1. In Park City, they have an extremely high short term rental market. They believe they have compliance, a compliance rate of roughly 50 to 60%. I didn't find a study on short term rentals that was done. However, I did look at the management website. And after a few conversations with them, I don't believe that it's worth the investment based on how many short term rentals Kansas City would have. I did create a proposed ordinance, which can be, can be found in Dropbox. I think the commission has looked at this a few times, it hasn't changed very much, but we can review and change this if needed, if you guys want to go forward with the ordinance. There are some further considerations, such as deciding on the zones where it would be allowed. Some suggested zones, in my opinion, would be A40, A5, A1, residential agriculture, R1, and general commercial. Suggested prohibited zones, in my opinion, would be residential multifamily, mobile home housing, entry corridor commercial, light industrial, manufacturing, senior housing, and public facility. We also need to either add or edit a definition. For nightly rental, we do have one in our code, which currently reads that nightly lodging facility means any place or portion thereof that is rented or otherwise made available to a person for transient lodging purposes for a period of less than 30 days, including, without limitation, a hotel, a motel, lodge, bed and breakfast, condominium project, single family residence, or timeshare project. We would need to discuss fees and fines. Currently, we charge $25, a $25 application fee for home occupations and $50 for commercial licenses. These are in annual at these rates. The commission should discuss if these rates are sufficient for the inspections and enforcement of a short term rental. Additionally, Summit County is exploring a good neighbor policy, which they are requiring all applicants to place in a home. A sample of good neighbor policy from Bear Lake can be found in Dropbox. Essentially, this would hold homeowners and guests liable if Kansas City police are called for a neighborhood disturbance with fines starting at 500 for the first violation and $1,000 for the second violation. Summit County's only measure of control has been a loss of license. However, it's not effective enough and they're seeking a more immediate penalty. Rental application would need to be, would need to be created. There's a sample of an application in Dropbox. Discuss potential for limiting short term rental licenses. Given that Kansas City has no experience with allowing short term rentals, one option to start off would be to limit the amount of licenses that we give out. We could start low and see how that impacts the neighborhoods, police staff, long, long term rentals, et cetera. Discuss the benefits. The benefits that the city are transient tax, that the cities may impose on temporary lodging up to 1%. The Utah sales tax information for lodging providers in Dropbox contains a list of taxable items. There is also a licensing fee that the city would gain from the addition of nightly rentals. Staff recommendations. Staff recommend that the Planning Commission discuss, discuss the options, discuss the proposed ordinance. And whether or not staff should move forward with this topic.
Perfect, thanks. Scott, do you have anything to add?
Yep.
Awesome. Just a couple of questions. I noticed it kind of was crazy that we went down six housing units in a year.
I mean.
And then my question is, if we have the short term rentals already in our pool, what are they classified as? Are they the renter occupied or are they vacant housing? Do we know?
I, I would think they would be classified as vacant housing. Would be my guess.
So we have about five?
Because the renter housing would be, I think, stipulated under long term housing. I don't think that they would classify themselves as vacant house, but I don't know, Tom knows more about that than I do.
No, it all depends on what you categorize it as. A rental would be a short term. If you talk to Jeff Jones.
Yeah, that's where it came from.
He would, he would say that rental is a rental because it would be considered as an investment property, not as the, does that make sense?
But what is that versus vacant housing?
Again, as a subject, determine that, yeah. You keep the policy of your way.
Yeah.
Did, did they do it off of tax, do you know, like, so?
Yeah, it's from the assessor's office, so, yeah.
Because like if I wanted my rental home to be a taxed as a primary residence, I'd just give them a copy of my long term lease from my tenant and the tenant has to change their driver's license to that address.
Yeah.
So then I would think that that's probably falls within, I don't know, renter occupied?
The state code says, so in your category, you have to invest in property. Your tenant has to apply my residence, they give 45% discount. If US landlord or say that has your company, right?
Right.
Is that how you understand it?
Yeah, so then would that be owner occupied, do you think, from these statistics?
It would be considered under the state tax as primary residence for that. But they would rent it for 31 days or more, right?
For sure. A year.
The state code would say 31 days or more, 30 days or more would be considered long term.
Interesting, okay. Tell me in our zones, Amanda, where the PUD would fall? So when you said, here's some possible land zones?
Do you mean short, short term rentals?
No, so you said we'd have to decide on the zones, like A40, A5, A1, RA. Where would a PUD fall into? Do we have to specifically designate that a short term rental could be an PUD?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So we have a 48?
Yeah.
Home project coming in.
They would be given a zoning at the time.
So PUD is a zone in replacement of a standard template. And so you might, in the development agreement, where you might decide for that particular project, that could be the PUD, whether you want to allow short-term rentals and the quantity or allow them in fact. Because it's really not a template zone. It's your... You're basically taking a piece of ground and you're describing what the zoning requirements are for that project that are separate and completely unique from any template. So you might say, well, PUDs are based on individual basis. It will become matter depending project. You might say, I don't know. It just depends on how you want to handle it. But PUDs aren't really a template zone. They're, it's a way to create an area where you have different zoning inside a project that is not template. But the template zone wouldn't allow them.
Sure. So like on the project that we just approved the application on, at what point do you say, we only want X amount or we don't want short-term rentals within this project?
In that development.
On their next step?
Well, if you don't allow from your resident one month, your home can be your resident five month.
Well, you would define those zones in a PUD. You would just say that densities allowed in there. And you might say, well, we'll allow you 5% or 1% or 10%, whatever it might be. Or you might say, well, well, look. It's an over 55 development. We don't want any short-term rentals in that. But you would do that individually in the PUD where, or as a template zone describes your title.
For example, High Star has it in their development agreement. There are certain...
There's a percent?
Well, no, there's certain overlays in the High Star zone that are not allowed to have short-term rentals. So I think it would be specified in the development agreement. No short-term rentals are allowed.
So one of the risks of going with a PUD for a developer is you guys get to define what his rights and entitlements are. When you have a template zone, code defines what he's entitled to. And so you may say, one, five, ten, none. It's up to whatever the city decides when the PUD is...
If we left it alone with an HOA over that, that's still the table. That's your problem.
But if we don't leave it alone, is what we say?
Then your HOA.
Your HOA can cover it. Or it's either CCNRs can cover it or you would use municipal powers.
And which one trumps?
The HOA is covered by state law. So it would be in trouble with the states and municipalities. Does that make sense?
So if there's nothing in state law, then what we say might dictate? If there's nothing in state law on short-term rentals at this point? If that changes, are we grandfathered in?
No.
Well, so I guess that's one of my concerns, right? With the PUD, is it so it would be specific for each one? Is it our job to remember all these little nuances that we have to keep in these development agreements?
I don't think... No. That's got to be set up in there in the PUD, right? I mean, that's...
Yeah, we're the ones who approve that. We're the ones who say, yes, can, no, you can't.
I have a chair for that. But any other problems, again, it's also like if you see what Summit County gives to actually put your payment ordinance, how are you going to complicate your investment plan?
Enforce it.
Yeah.
You can't enforce it.
Why have it? That's some of my next questions. I just needed to know where a PUD falls and what kind of what our thoughts are on that. Because I don't want them, you know? Part of my concern is when we had some input, it wasn't necessarily a public hearing on their proposed PUD. They didn't want rental units. So he changed them all to be purchased, or at least maybe, you know? But it's concerning that potentially that could lead to, oh, I'll keep these as short-term rentals.
Yeah. I would think that that would all be incorporated into the development agreement and CCNRs that we would ultimately review and make comments or changes to.
Do we see their whole development agreement and their CCNRs?
That has to be both, right? I think, yes.
You see it?
Yeah.
And we have the latitude to disagree and ask for something different, you know, like what we see in those.
Right.
I feel like the PUD and HOAs can enforce that area better for something like this, other areas of the family.
For sure, right? I just, what we need to make sure is that we capture it in their agreement.
Yeah, because enforcement, that's the issue, right? That's the issue with that. You can have all the statute and all the rules you have want, but until somebody can enforce it here. You're doing like Summit County is just kind of forming it all the way. From what you read, that sounds to me like whether it is kind of open.
Well, they're working on it. I think they're working on a new ordinance as we speak to...
In Summit County?
Yes. To try and reel it back.
Right.
About the process, though.
It is tough. It's really tough. I mean, it's tough from every industry has a different idea on why it should or shouldn't happen, right? With that.
Yeah, literally every industry. It affects everyone.
It does. All right. So that was one of my questions. And then we have to discuss fees and fines. I do like the good neighbor policy. I thought that was really good. And I definitely, in my opinion, would be, yes, we definitely need to do that. It talks about, under the good neighbor policy, that there's fees and fines starting at $500 for the first violation, $1,000. Who... So if Kansas City's called over and they have to issue, does the fine, typically when somebody's fined, it then goes to the court and they have the ability to go in and say, oh, well, this was a different type of stuff. You know, like when you get a speed ticket. Because those are all handled by the courts. So who do we know? Who administers those types of fines and fees? Perfect. And so then all of that comes back to the city? All the revenue generated from that comes to the city?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And that, we're seeing a, so we cited on, we're part of an organization of 13 luxury markets like Kansas, for us. What they've seen is successful, those that take the money and so they can go back into the city. So they can hire somebody to enforce it and make sure that's fair across the board. You guys have received applications and process them and keep them on the books. We know the good or bad ones. And they get, say that they go to $1,000 when they're becoming a homeowner child. You just have to review that patient actually or put that one person. Then the rest of the community doesn't have itself, like, you know about it.
Yeah, well, these are complaints. So then you do know about them. Like some police has been, the police have been called to that home for a disturbance or noise or whatever. What do you, Tal, what do you find is the standard rate for some short-term rental application? Have you looked into that?
It's whatever you look it up. But it's a balance, man. If you want people to apply.
Absolutely.
And you don't want to force them underground. Which makes, and that was my terrible position, put it on the books. So it's that, you've got to pay for it, Tal. If you want Kansas to be a good town to live in for a person who wants long-term residence and goes to home property, you can lock that up. People take away their rights and livelihoods. So where's the balances? I don't know if there's a, like, old...
Inspections, I think, at least. I mean, Grace, for example, goes and does inspections on new commercial business sites. And they'll go and inspect that. So that portion, I believe, will be the same. You know, and my portion relatively the same. So I'm not sure how much more of a workload we're talking about. I don't know how, it's so unknown that I don't know how to pass city staff.
You'd likely have to look at it separately and look at it over a period of time. And then decide if you're going to use a schedule based on the effort and the community.
And I think we would need to, like I said, in my staff report, and Summit County is wanting the fire marshal to be involved too. So we would need to coordinate with them. And they've happened, so those...
Wow. I would pay $500.
I agree.
I mean, it's costly with a business. Anybody that tends to do this, commercial theater in Kansas, you know, they pay a fee for $500 for a nightly rental property. Want to make it probably $1,000 a night, $500 a night. $500.
Well, and then it pays for your inspector to go out. It pays for, does the fire district charge a separate fee on top of what Kansas City would charge? Like when you apply to build a house, they charge?
Yeah, and that would be their own thing.
Do you have any more comments on fees? Definitely an application.
It says here that the, from this good neighbor thing we're talking about, that you would hold the homeowner slash guest liable. Isn't it ultimately the homeowner that we would have any leverage with? They don't have any leverage with that guest. He's just going to walk away.
No, and I don't know. For example, I don't know how they're like, in reading through their good neighbor policy, I'm not clear on whether that fine, if the police go out, does it go to whoever's renting the unit? Because they're going to be the ones that are there making the noise.
No, there's a couple of different ways to think about it. Most successful way, the word "renters" is in it, is if you give the homeowner their responsibility.
Then you have to...
They're the one that's going to be in line. That means either they have a property manager that's on site or a post-bidest comes and now, because they're the clearly seen in line.
The two would be spread, that in the application process or business like that.
Yeah.
So they would define that.
A good neighbor policy would be, oh, don't leave your trash. You know, there are plenty of things that you should do as a good neighbor, right?
Right.
And they sign it. So when they go out, the application online for that property to Kansas, they're signing it. So they know that their responsibility is that 10 o'clock at night, you can knock, 3 o'clock. So you don't throw your matches and stuff in the leaves next door, which is going to cause a problem. Something happens. And they sign it. And landlord is already signing it. That's the great agreement for that. You have a good call.
And the neighbor policy is covered. Such things as that?
Yes.
Yeah, the good neighbor policy sample that Amanda provided, boys. Thank you, Amanda. Says that, you know, it has the fines listed. So if you're signing, the tenant knows that they are on book.
And I think with the application, I put it in the ordinance too, but there would need, each business, each nightly rental would need to provide information for a property manager that's available 24 hours a day. So that would be who we would contact.
So some municipalities are stating that property manager has to be within so many miles of maybe from somewhere. It's hard to react to somebody that's in Houston. But if they were close, they would have commented on if the unit we all have Kansas problems. That's just one option.
Wait. What are you guys' thoughts on the amount that we allow?
You don't have to. I mean, that's just another, that was just another idea that we came up with was, you know, should there be, to start off at the cap of how many we want to start at and see where it goes?
So how many do we know we have right now?
Five, maybe?
Which is less than 10%.
Because that's only, say, we know we have, but we believe there's more than that. But that can't be confirmed.
It's hard to tell. I mean, the only reference that we have are websites and...
So just taking a scabbing of our...
That's what I found on the websites. It was about five to seven was what I had seen, was within our city limits.
So how many, if everybody come into compliance today, what number are we thinking? 20, less than 20, more than 20?
Hard to say.
Well, 20%, if you've got 780, 20% is 156, right? Could be calculated. So that may be more than, like, are you talking 20% or 20...
20 homes.
Homes.
Yeah, 20 short-term rentals.
20 likely rentals.
If we did, I mean, if we say we had, let's just drop the 2021, and we said we had 10% vacant housing. It's 78 total in the count?
78 vacant houses in that one?
That's 78 vacant houses. Whether or not those were rentals are literally just sitting vacant.
Well, and that, I think part of it is they can be vacant part of the year. Like, take Stan Marshall ever. Perfect, right? Is that considered vacant housing because they're only here for maybe six months?
It's different. It depends on whether they're classified as a area of primary home. And that...
But it's...
And that would be based on what most beneficial for the tax rate in each year?
This is where the doubt is.
I think I remember when I talked to Jeff Jones about this, that that was his takeaway was that the vacant was the short, was what we could consider were probably the short-term rentals, but...
So in this, it just kind of, we're out there, right? Summit County pops a list. This is where you got part of yours, right? 21% of the housing in the county consists of short-term rentals. Grand, 18%. King, 13%. Washington County, which St. George, is 3.7%. Salt Lake County is saying 21, not even a full percent of their... Right? Think the whole, damn, it's wide open, right? I mean, we, where do you want to start? Do you really have a problem? We what? Do you really have a problem?
Do we have a problem with short-term rentals? I don't know that we necessarily have a problem right this second.
What if you did have it? I just don't have that. What if you didn't have it? But everything that matters has to be the commission. Put everything that Amanda has tried to do to the commission in place, see how it goes, what the mayor, you know, they said, they list that, maybe see what goes on. It always come back to it, it would become a number.
Then again, it's kind of like trying to close the barn door after the horses are all away, right?
So one of the things that we're making there is one of, one of the things we've all had in campuses, we're out of places for this to start. And I, I don't, I don't think it's I don't think it's too far out there to say that short-term rentals aren't really awesome for long-term rentals. And so that makes me a bit nervous. And so I'm concerned about that because, because it's bad enough. I mean, if we have five percent vacant in town, that's really, that's, that's one or two homes. I mean, they might be being remarked, you don't know. They could stand a lot of work, but that's one of the challenges we have with, for kids and aging generation families is we have no place to start with rental points. And whatever is out there is so outrageous that it's not even an option anyway. And so that makes me nervous about, about this whole, um, start with everything, no gaps and then, and see where it goes is, I, I appreciate your advice, it makes me nervous.
Right, but a lot, I'd say a lot of these kids, like in my little household, one point four million. Just down this week, my kids were helping me and, and for a short rental, no, I don't know. But I, I, I beg you if you're saying that, I agree, but could our kids really afford a lot of price points on it?
So, so let me ask you a question. How do, excuse me, how do we even start to even try to get that under control? Cause we're, we're victims of our environment, you might say, right? We live in a beautiful place that everybody wants to live. And so how do you, how do you enforce, or how do you go to someone and say, hey, we want you to make this a long-term rental and a short-term rental, right? We can't do that, right? And the rent's so high right now, I, if I had grand, I'd have to well, maybe if Timmy let me rent it, then maybe there. But I, but how do we, how do we as a planning commission try to even, is there even anything we can do?
So what about them?
Well, to even, I, I would eliminate, how do we even try to help on the housing market without letting you build ten million houses everywhere?
I think one of the things we already need is we have the modern housing organs.
Agreed, which I think is awesome. And that's about the only thing that we can even, we even have.
Aside from that, um, maybe that's the only way you answer that question. I'm not sure that does that because, um, I remember hearing when I was elected, we, we had a fifty thousand shortage in Uco. I think we still have that shortage in Uco, Sully, and they're building high-rise apartments as fast as they can build it. So for me, that tells, tells me that you're building places for people to come, not to solve the problem.
Agreed.
I don't know, yeah, so would you, would you, could you, uh, moderate income housing units, if you make them so that they're not? So they're affordable. So our kids can have a entry level person who tests out a college that's affordable. And somebody doesn't buy, knows, uh, moving to, or a year, I'm trying to answer short-term rentals, would that be what, what they're asking?
We start.
Or, or a million dollar house, so there's no way.
Okay, so let me ask you a question. So this P, this PUD that we just approved, application, right? Those short-term or the, the, when it was moderate income housing units that we get, can we put stipulations on those in the PUD that says if you purchase this home, if you sell it, you, how?
So the ordinance requires those homes to be, um, be restricted for thirty years. That's what our ordinance says. And so in the, in the PUD and the development agreement, we specified that that ordinance, we followed, those units could not be classified as SDRs.
But that would be horrible, right?
For at least thirty years, don't mean here.
Right.
Right, I, I, I understand that. So if I buy one, if I buy one today and I live in it for three years and I sell it, what's the restrictions placed on me?
Well. And it, no, again, it's still stay within that eighty-one to one hundred and twenty percent of the.
But you can only.
Or you could put stipulation on it, you could only have three percent equity. I've seen, there's a lot of ways you can do that.
So that's something we need seriously consider before Rick comes back.
And you might say that, you might say in the development agreement, if the moderate income housing has to be on that, no, you just can't rent.
I agree. That's.
And that's, and that's one of the things I think that is a benefit to the city for a PUD is we have, we have a lot of latitude over, over standard template zones where there are defined entitlements.
Agreed. Cause we, cause from what I'm reading and what I'm hearing, we can, we even have control in some of the, the CCNRs.
Yes.
HOA, those kind of restrictions.
If you find that, and make it affordable, you can keep it at a level.
Where it's affordable, instead of like one-time affordable, we can keep it affordable.
We're concerned is keeping our kids in our community, our families, that's solid, that's all.
Now, you might hear, um, projects where developers say, well, we wanna do a community, but we're gonna, we're just gonna lease the land underneath the building, sell the building, lease the land under. I'm not sure that that doesn't create a stronghold for the owner slash developer. I don't, I don't know any of that concept very much.
So is that kind of what the school district's saying, was contemplating doing out there, the same thing?
It makes, it makes me nervous because I, because I think homeownership, I would be homeownership, like the moderate income housing, not to be that.
I would think that that would be.
That's my personal opinion.
You say you can follow that clarify.
Yes.
And so.
Well, that's a problem, each of them, who changes their own rules and that, and there again, they, they change the rules with government right out of hand, and that makes me nervous. So. The whole goal is, is hopefully to try and create something for our kids and, and the only person that's gonna do that is you said, because we have no vested interest in financials, don't they? Isn't that, is that what I see?
There was a study that I read out of Colorado, though, that they said they limited the number of STRs and they have this influx of people coming in to apply for them. And then the following year, it's like they dropped down to like a quarter of what they do. It's like everybody thought they were, were gonna lose out on something and then they were like, I don't need this anymore. So, you know, I think had enough of all that reason, I do think we should probably do that cap, but on the, on the.
What, what's five percent? Does that seem like an accurate?
Thirty-eight. But you, but you only have, only have, let's see, a five percent vacant, so that's three units. So maybe you're starting, how you rate the units could be available for STRs, what you're asking is, I mean, if that's present. Basically, you're saying you need rental opportunities to, 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 to SDR and why necessarily do it?
Does that sound really covered? So the city knows the five percent code?
We were thinking the other way.
I know. That, that's.
Thank you.
Well, if you looked at our numbers, Tal, we're on the decline. We lost six last year. We're getting smaller.
Yeah, so you need to decide extending your, just the number of units. And that's, that's a good point.
One of the other things we think about she is, SDR, she has to be able to set the concept, we've got a, we've got a. He said that's where people get jobs out of, jobs. I know when we go right in place, we'll go, you know, we're going to Oregon. We'll go to the rest parks in town and we'll spend money, but if you stay here, it'd be, you know, all of that would be in it. So isn't it gonna help our population, our citizens, uh, because there are people in, that's just another, it doesn't matter.
Might as well. Might as well, because you can wait. That's not the issue with businesses.
Well, and, and part of that too, it's, it's a, it's a needed thing. I mean, I use them all the time, whenever we travel, whatever. I mean, it's an airspeed, right? Cause it's, it gives you way more latitude.
They rent, they rent from numbers, they rent to, you know, we go to our stomach, Tal, and they, in the high star, we.
Well, and it brings tax into the city too.
I mean, I don't, I think we're just, aside on a number, I mean, we don't have to decide tonight, but I think.
I think, I mean, my suggestion is.
Hits what Tal's saying, if we keep it at five percent, as the city grows, that five percent is gonna grow with it. If we say there's only, we're only gonna allow three, then that's pretty good number, two, three, whatever.
Yeah, I think if you go with, if you go with a reasonable hard number, even if you wanna start with a percentage to get to that number. Because now somebody comes in, it's on the bubble and they want it, and they're gonna say, where did you get your numbers from? Are these really accurate? And that is last year's number, now it's this year.
If we give five more next year.
And so you just, you can use that as your guide, but let's get, if we say we want two or three or five percent, let's get to a number and say whatever, this is the number. And then as our numbers change, then we control that and we're not at the interpretation and have to deal with uh, possible inaccuracies in the way.
I don't know where we're at, six homes, so I can't think of six homes that just disappeared from twenty twenty-one to twenty-two.
Right. And with that in mind, that's why I have the comment I knew, I think we would say, this is really tactic.
Right, I think that makes sense. That's a great idea. Um.
And it doesn't mean that that numbers.
Not based on a percent.
Right.
Right.
And as this develops, if, uh, we can find that we're way too high or way too low for the number we chose. We'll know till we.
Till we do it.
Till we get this influx of people screaming and.
Right? Yeah, till we get the people lining up outside when they open up the applications. Sorry, Julie. All right. My thought was we would just kind of throw around some comments and different things and then we'd go look at it again. We have Amanda try and implement some of our comments into the proposed ordinance, would that work? Um, so there was a definition in our code for nightly lodging facility. Are we thinking we need to have a definition that specifically defines short-term rentals? Yes. Yeah, so we need to include that definition, whether we.
Whether we amend this existing one, which maybe, maybe we just, off this existing one, we take off single-family residence for night share.
And you're saying excluding short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Have a definition for.
Exactly. And then that points to a short-term rental definition.
Is there a place for, 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 for short-term rentals?
Right.
They would be.
I do too. So we need to add a short-term rental definition. And then it looked like, so all nightly rental units should be required to register in a business with the state, and have ten of the tax ID, EIM number. So that means they set up their short-term rental as a business, right? So it is, which is good because they'll tell you.
And you would be like.
Yeah, okay, okay. So that's good. And that way they just don't claim them as an individual, like it can only be as an individual. Um, under under the fifteen thirty-five zero six zero, um, I didn't know, unit is capitalized and is that a defined term? Do you know?
No.
Do we need to define, or do we just do it, any short-term rental must be inspected? And then is it the building department or is there, you have a building department?
Yeah.
Is that way, great, great.
Well, it's common, they spin what happened.
Oh, she goes in and expects.
I think she had a lot that one night.
Oh, there was a lot of hats on one night. Let's just put it that, that's name in there. So maybe we just do something like.
Where, which one are you on there? Oh, all-night rent, are you on the first?
Yeah, and I just changed it to in any, and I would just do maybe short-term rental must be inspected by the building, you haven't issued a license. And then, um, and these are just my changes from reading though, where you guys may have your own. Under paragraph, under that same section, paragraph number one A, I have snow removal during winter months to a level that allows safe access. I took out two of the building, but just say that says over the normal pedestrian access to the, maybe short-term rental again, it's the other unit. And then, so the sub-paragraph B says, snow removal service to off-street parking facilities associated with the rental property. So that the off-street parking is at all times available for the occupied use. And I just didn't know, I was trying to think of a place where there would be off-street parking.
Off-street means driveway.
Oh, well, there you go.
We define, cause we had that issue a while ago, so we changed the definition, our definition, they brought on street and off-street. And so.
Off-street.
You were in the city, you were in the city right away.
Off-street.
Off in the city right away, off.
Perfect. Well, that makes sense. Off-street.
Cause we have that confusion.
Is not like.
Cause people thought off-street meant when you're off the asphalt, you're on the street. It's not really right when you're considering snow and certain other things that you need to deal with, some of your bits and utilities, there's all kinds of things. So we've fixed that.
Okay. Well, and I was even thinking off-street in like, even in a different place, like not even by the unit, right? Like you were off the street over here in this parking lot as opposed to.
Low in the off-street.
Right, true.
Another county.
In another county, yeah, that's where you, that was, um, then I have limitation on the number of licensed. There was something in the Summit County ordinance that you, or proposal that you sent that talked about basic safety requirements. And, and maybe that's part of the building department inspection, but it just said they needed to have like fire suppression and detection, carbon monoxide marked exits to the home. What's that?
One of the, one of the things that they talked about was the house fire, the fire, the fire marshal, the special property, they were checking.
They would have those things. Okay, awesome.
Not only staff here, but the fire, the fire, we don't require it for its maintenance, but also require it to go check to see if it's, the plugs are on. Rushes, there's no fire that rushes.
Perfect. So it's in the first line there where it says building department, we could put the fire department as well. Oh, that would be a good addition, I think, in the fire department. What about, um, is it the fire department or who, cause one of the things in Summit County is also was the emergency vehicle access. Is that, would fire department check for that? Like the ability for an ambulance to show up at the home?
You might per se, EMS, emergency.
Emergency.
Yeah, that way the fire, the fire department's more of that.
Instead of.
Hands on, now Summit County defines that in the next.
Right. Yes, we are.
Could you fire slash EMS? Whatever was hopefully, so you can.
I wouldn't be so much worried about the EMS versus fire. EMS with an ambulance, it might be.
I think it could be one.
Just.
Maybe two, three, six, seven.
I just didn't know who inspects for that. If the fire truck fits the ambulance a little bit, yeah, so. How many of the fire department? Well, no matter what they change it to, it's. All right. At some point in life, if there are a few inspections instead of this one, then it's just fine. Perfect. Um, and then, of course, two, it was paragraph two A, just the specified zone, so we just need to be cognizant that if we put it in a PUD, it's really making sure that we're acting with that. With the PUD, so let's say we set a specific number. And with the PUDs, since they're in our city, if they had, say, five, would that go to the number that they have in their city, so we're good then?
So if you're applying to City Council, you can say that it does, and you can say that it doesn't. You have that latitude.
Oh, it didn't. She's telling me, we need to remember one more thing. Um, let's see. And then. By the way, Amanda, great job on putting this together because I didn't have that many corrections. Fifteen thirty five zero seven zero. Um, after four, I just put a semicolon at the end, single five, single six, and then I'd add an and, and. And at the end of seven, I put a period. I think under fifteen thirty five zero eight zero, I would put following our grounds for replication of a, a short-term rental. I, there was one other spot, and I did go back to look, that I thought it referred to as the transient lodging, so maybe just go search for those.
This actually from, this ordinance came from a bunch of different cities, so.
Gotcha.
There's a good chance.
So, under fifteen thirty five zero eight zero again, we're here to maintain a licensed transient lodging unit manager for the property. I thought there was something that said it could be the owner.
I, yeah, that, that. As long as they're within so many miles, right? If the owner's in Florida, that doesn't do us any good, right? They have to be within so many miles, that's something.
Maybe we don't care if it's a licensed transient lodging unit manager, maybe we just care that it's whoever their property manager is. Whoever they.
Whoever listed as being manager.
The property located.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We've had some experiences in Kansas City where, um, reputation of being licensed might be better for the city. We just had situations where we had some. I don't know, if you call property manager, it's whatever.
I think if you're a property manager, you could be licensed, but what happens when you have an owner who wants to come in and run a short-term rental and they don't, and they wanna manage the.
Is it, is it a licensed?
A licensed property manager, I think there's quite a bit to that, isn't there?
So, so property owner who's licensed, I don't know, something, is that, is that the safety for the city? That licensed manager.
I think a licensed property manager makes sense if you're going to go that route, but if you are the owner, I think you should be.
I would agree.
To manage your own property, right, and be responsible for.
But you gotta still be within the stipulation, is that a being?
Agreed.
That's one of your minds. So I don't think we can separate that.
So let's, let's throw out. Say, you own the property, you want your brother, and you live in California, and you're gonna have your brother is that following what you're asking?
No. My brother's not a licensed.
He's not the owner.
I mean, he's not the owner, and he's not a licensed property manager.
So we catch, that's where I want to go with that owner.
So the first section, back to paragraph one now, but we're talking about this.
No, 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 we're, we're back to this, we're stopping, we're stopping.
The authorized lodging must be properly managed, period. As a condition to holding a valid license, the licensee agrees to provide or arrange for adequate property management services, period. In the event an owners association exists, it shall be responsible for property maintenance.
So is that your HOA, right? In the event an owner agrees to be responsible for property maintenance, the licensee, oh, I, so we're good? This doesn't have anything to do with the fines.
Okay, but I mean.
Okay, we can go back.
No, 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 no.
No, we can't go back to the beginning.
In the event an owners association exists. So now you're saying that we can throw this in a rental pool.
Only, no, this is saying the management standards, and this is what they're required to do, right?
Owners association exists, but that, would that not like be?
I think. I think this is the management standard.
Or like be like aggressive, hesitant to. Yeah, yeah. So, and there not, it'd be the aura. Kansas State. Or you have a development that is part of each way. Part of. Like why will Francis? Animals, those animal, have each way, those who don't have, are not part of.
And I think REX under that one, they're just responsible for the snow removal, the maintenance, uh, the trash collection, cards, all of that, it's not necessarily the compliance and enforcement. So back to the compliance and enforcement, since I was. Moving to the front again. So do you think we would take out number one, the failure to maintain a licensed transient lodging unit manager for the property? That would just come out? Because that's not really a compliance, if we're not requiring it for being the owner, or do we put, just put owner in there?
But you tell you to.
Hold up when you came in.
Yeah.
Okay. Failure to.
So I would sell it up. Some.
So, so how's that work? So if, if I have a rental property, nightly rental property, and go and sell it, does that, does it sell as a?
I don't think the application would go with the same.
Well, that's a good point, might want to list that.
Because it's, it has everywhere else.
Well, because like if you consider, um, this in terms of the condition that he's putting in, then it would go with the property forever. But it's. Even, even though it's not, but if someone, someone probably deliberate about it, because that's a right by use established as a short-term rental. It might as well.
Business license.
Ask Rob about it.
A business license wouldn't go, I mean.
Well, well.
If you're selling a business, that business license would expire once the business is sold, so.
But.
But it still has to apply all over again, so it's.
Okay.
But would you reserve that cap for that?
No.
Because it's. If you're through Paul, and you have stored that for the center problem, it's cost of housing. Then why would you have that go along with that? You wouldn't, I guess, say we need to describe it, if that's a wrong question.
So, so, and the reason I ask is, so we have, what is that, landmark development down here? That the car license, to sell cars, stayed with that building to this day.
That was different.
They wanted to start selling cars there.
No, it didn't.
Is that a zone?
It was a non, it was a non-conforming use.
But it was a conditional use?
No, it was not a conditional use, it was a non-conforming use, and so long as the business, the original business doesn't change, then it goes with the property, so it was grandfathered in as a non-conforming use because they didn't change. And that's why they came to you guys when they wanted to add the, the garage, because it was a non-conforming use and they were extending the non-conforming use, which wouldn't be allowed by code. It was different.
But is your, but is your comment described the problem when you said as long as it stays the original business?
Right.
But it's not a non, it's not a non-conforming though.
I was curious, because I thought that that stayed there when we.
But does it reserve the spot in that?
Like if we were to cap the short-term rentals, and somebody sold their short-term rental, then you automatically have to start all over, and so if we had reached our, say we set the cap at thirty-five, we'd reach the cap there.
But if it came in the same video, said, this guy's gone, I'm here.
But if we had another, if we had a person in.
But if you have a waitlist.
If we had a waitlist of people, we could go to the next one and say, sorry. That's, I mean.
Yes, please, because I could see that being a problem in the future, especially if we gather up four, like I want.
So does it come with a problem?
I don't think we want to go with the sale, but I think we want to make sure that that's.
I, I would agree.
Okay, let's just put it for the last term, I own a property that's short-term, and I could sell it. As to you, and I could argue that I'm saying this is a short-term rental forever, you're gonna pay a payment for that property.
And then you're gonna be very disappointed when you come in here and you don't get a short-term rental.
And then you're going to sue the real estate agent who listed the property and said.
Right, because that's what we're saying, right? We did, that's.
That needs to be clarified, because that depends on if we allow a waiting list, or if it can automatically be transferred within so many days, or just transferred. Cause it doesn't necessarily have to go with that property forever.
Okay, no, that's what.
But it does need to be, the process needs to be listed.
Yeah, because I see if we put a cap on it, whatever the cap may be, and we've got fifteen people that's waiting in line for one of those licenses.
Well, it's like you said, if we get the preference to the bottom of the transfer, we can x amount of.
So we just have to make sure that.
That we.
We know what the word is.
You sort of, I think, to decide how you want that.
Yeah.
And then, but we need some clarification.
Do we need clarification for Rob, from Rob, or do we?
I don't think it's a legal issue.
On how to, all we need to know is how word, you guys need to decide.
You guys should say the.
If you think that a person that had it gets preference over the other one, so we can make a process, and then we'll have Rob make sure. That we have a.
Right, but I don't think the decision is a legal decision, I don't think Rob needs to decide on that. It's up to you guys, and then we can, we can clarify the wording.
Larry, thoughts?
I would say, yes, they could get a maximum amount of time to transfer.
Rex.
Fifteen days, whatever.
Rex is still thinking, Tim, you don't have any thoughts on that?
I think you, you need to make a law on sport to continue, but otherwise, if you don't, and they're gonna say, okay, I'm not gonna do it all yet, but I'll probably just do it on the report.
So it's why within x amount of days?
So you give them an opportunity to do it the right way. And then they'll do it the right way, but if you don't, then you're gonna have a, a compliance issue and a problem of enforcement, et cetera. So yes, I think we make some reasonable accommodation for it. And it would be part of the original number. If they do that, but if they, if they let it last past their deadline, it's their problem, not our problem.
How many days is reasonable?
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days after closing? I was gonna say, sometimes closing takes like thirty days, so I think that would be the thirty. But you could, yeah, you could say after closing.
I'm still gonna disagree. If you do that, then you gotta get away, get rid of the waiting list, because that's not fair to the people that's been waiting, to do it legally.
I don't know.
Why is it fair?
Cause I've.
If it's in, it's already existed.
I've, I've been on.
It's in the ordinance.
Yeah, but, but you sold the property, and then we're not selling it as a nightly rental. Right? We're selling the property, so, cause I, I think I got a pretty legal stand, if you deny me. If I'm the next in line and you deny me, because you sold that property and I went to this guy, and he decides to make it a nightly rental, I, I would just disagree, I think, I think if that's the case, you're out of the waiting list, and don't have a waiting list. These are gonna be our nightly rentals, and that's how we're gonna do it, because I don't think, I don't think it's fair to the people that's waiting in line to do it legally.
Only way you're gonna do that is if you're, the one that's selling is selling it as a nightly rental.
Which, which by the way, gives me premium dollar. All right.
And then I don't know that you can sell it as that. That's one thing we could reach that's rough, because I don't know if they can sell it as that, so that's huge on a whole use of a property, and say, it's almost giving it a condition, saying, this goes with this property forever.
But they have a license that says that.
That doesn't matter, the license doesn't go with it.
I, I'm just throwing questions.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, I think. We just said that's bad.
Well, the other side of that too, as you say, fifty days, but if it's been marketed and purchased as a nightly rental, then to me, you don't need fifty days. You believe that's what it was, you don't need, you shouldn't. You can't even get a business license in a day.
But we can, but can they do that? I don't know if that's a right way to sell it. We have seen it happen, whether it's legal or not.
That's why, I think we probably need that, um, they was talking to them fifteen thirty.
Yeah, because some realtors aren't honest, and some people don't say what they're actually doing in their houses, so.
Well, and I think it goes back to some of the problems we had, so with the sign ordinance, right? People just come in, they find a building, they don't check to see where, and they just, yeah, they don't know that they have to apply for a sign from it. Um, and I have seen listings particularly coming out of, like St. George area, that say, you know, this, no nightly rentals allowed in this HOA. And so they're, they're very specific usually. So a ton of people buying short-term rental properties in St. George.
Don't need to understand where, where this ordinance, if we put one in place, would put us in a different situation than we currently are, where we can't even identify or ask, we just have to rely on them to come forward and say, I have nightly rentals. Once we get this in place, does that put us in a position then?
Not to go research.
Not to research it online, but it was brought up as a, a nice, a nice alternative. Well, a nice alternative is that we gain the ability to say, we know, I mean, we can still use Airbnb and VRBO as a reference to say, look, these are the properties that are not licensed. We can then send them a letter to say, hey, we know that you're not licensed, why don't you come to the city, here's the process, here's an application, fill out an application, and become a nightly rental legally. That, I think, is our best tool, and I think our, our best tool is that a lot of residents and a lot of people don't know that the city, or don't know that the state doesn't allow us to use those websites to prohibit them, but in a way, we can, in a roundabout way, we can still use the websites to know about them and say, here, go about it the right way.
And I think what you're asking is what of, of the positives are, of why do you even care? And one would be to make sure taxes are coming to the right places.
I understand that part of it.
Yeah.
What I don't understand is, okay, you, this has been one of those units in operation, and I'm gonna sell it, and I got on the waiting list, and so I couldn't get a business license to operate it, so I'm just gonna operate it without a business license.
I don't think you're going to stop that, but what I do think you will find is that, let's say you don't have one, but I do. If you're not doing what you're supposed to, I may go to the city and be like, Tim is operating a short-term rental unit and he doesn't have this license.
And so if you do, well, of course, does the city?
Oh, I think that's when you can come in with the compliance and enforcement, right?
Yeah.
And say, shut them down.
That's where I'm fishing with this. Because right now, we can't.
We can't go on the internet.
You can't go on the internet and we can't issue a fine right now, right? We can't do it anymore.
By looking on, so if you looked on the internet and you found out what they're doing, you could not issue a fine. But then the last point is, if I was renting my house and she had one and said, hey, the Calderas is breaking the law in King City, then you can get a penalty down on me, full force of the law.
And I do think the citizens will be your number one complaint. They will be in here saying, there was a big little party down at Tim's house the other night and it didn't look like Tim's family because that's not the crowd he brings in. So I think your neighbors tackle on you more than anybody.
That's when we know about you already.
There you go. People have already complained. And if you get a complaint, then they can look in their system to see if they're, if they have an application, if they've been approved.
That's why I think the neighbor policy is.
I agree. I definitely think we need to implement a good neighbor policy in here somewhere, Amanda.
Yeah, with that in mind, I might take a different view of the race theory there because I think you sell the property and you're older, constantly go through the process. And if he's, if there's an all opening there for him, good. If there isn't, then he needs to do his due diligence to find out where he is in line and determine if that's a valid property.
I can see it all, guys.
Me too.
Yeah, that can really see it all, guys.
Yeah, me too. Were you on that particular issue? Talk to Rob and then just come back with us. There are even two options, or three options, or how many other options Rob comes up with. So I have on number five, failure to renew the Camas City short-term rental license annually. Comes with a fine. My question is then, how does the enforcement work? So we talked about a five hundred dollar fine under the good neighbor policy. So if we don't do these things, do we have to put in the enforcement light? Then you lose your license. Then there's this kind of fine. Does that need to be defined in here?
So what's defined from that one? Hang on a minute. So you're, you read number five in fifteen point three five twenty-eight.
Yes.
So this is the following our grounds for revocation of the transient lodging license. You read number five. I'm curious about the fine. It just says that if you don't maintain your license, then you're, then you're, so am I misunderstanding your question?
So in our good neighbor policy that we were looking at, it talks about fines. So if you violate any of the rules, oh, maybe I should go back to number two. That says any recurring activity that disturbs the peace or violates the Camas Municipal Code regulating nuisances. So first of all, I think we need to define recurring because that can be like one, two, twelve.
I mean, this is something that already exists, is our nuisance code, which talks about disturbing the peace and a noise ordinance. So instead of referring or pointing to that, we can just point to a different section which talks about the good neighbor policy and then describe there the good neighbor policy and the fines that are associated with being noisy or.
That makes more sense. Because I'm like, where do the fines come into the compliance piece of it?
There's a fine portion. There's a fine portion in the nuisance ordinance.
Gotcha. Gotcha. That's, I wasn't connecting the dots. Like, where does the fine come in? Where does Camas City come in? And then you lose your license. Well, we just lost all of our money because we didn't find them before we revoked their license. Was my thought. But I like Amanda's idea that we just do the good neighbor policy and then that allows us to.
And I think that's geared more towards their renters, right? The good neighbor policies geared more towards the renter. If you don't do this, if you, if they have to come and see, the cops come and see me tonight, just so you know, I'm going to add five hundred dollars onto your deposit or whatever.
So we may need the compliance and enforcement saying, if you don't comply with the good neighbor policy, then we can revoke your license.
Yeah.
If this is a recurring problem that we have. So we may need to weigh that in as well. What are the thoughts to you guys, Hal? Now that I've talked the entire time?
I think we gave us some discussion. The, as we looked through this, and I had looked at it in the detail that you had mostly, but I think part of my comment comes from pulling some of these from different places and so forth. But consistency in what we're referring to these as, some places it's nightly rentals, others it's rental unit, others it's.
I'm not sure.
And I think once we find what we think really applies, then we just grab that and do a word search and make it consistent with what we think's appropriate. But I understand how we got here and so that's definitely not a criticism, just something that we probably will want to do. And there may be some places where it's appropriate to refer to it as the property as opposed to the specific one we choose. But that was basically my comment regarding this. I, I think we need to stay the course with it. It appears to me that we do need to get a policy in place. It probably won't be in perfect form when we put it in place, but we need to at least establish something that we can hit some track record on. And then if we need to revise or adjust and things are occurring that we get either left out or left it falls in, we will be like we typically do. We've had that with a lot of the other elements we work. It's a living document.
Didn't we just talk about the PUD?
We update it as we go. We learn from it.
That's not a criticism of those that were involved in creating and developing that school. You got to start somewhere.
Needs will change, circumstances will change, and insights will change. So.
Absolutely.
And that, my comments go along with what Tim said. And that is, I think it was awesome. It gave me a whole lot of stuff to think about, right? Some of the things that I think we need to go back and do, and that is what percentage slash number are we looking for that is doable for us, right? As a city, that's one of the things you need to decide. And then once this gets merged together with the comments and the things that we've talked about tonight, I think you're on track. I think we're looking pretty good.
Yes, and thank you, Amanda, for putting this all together for us and just pulling from twelve different sources and trying to come up with something that makes sense for our city as an overall.
It's a large pod.
Yeah, but no, but it's awesome because, you know, the reference to the words, that's an easy fix. Because once we figure out what language we want. So thank you. We definitely appreciate it because coming up with all of this on our own is not really where we spend our time at night, do we? So, awesome.
One more comment, just quickly. I think, and I don't know the answer to nine, but I think we give it some consideration. I think the good neighbor fees and the application fee are going to be very significant because we'll set numbers, but I think we, I think we need to not be bashful about making those fees pretty significant. So only serious people that are really going to take this serious and police it and do it the way we have outlined are going to make that commitment on the risk of the money they could lose on the good neighbor and also the amount of the application fee. And I think that will help us so that we don't have to, we don't have a waiting list of fifty people because it's five dollar application fee and what have I got to lose?
Valid point.
I think we really seriously look at some serious fees. They're making some money on this and they should, and we will, report part of it and we'll work together with it. And I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's something that's very consideration as we go.
Another point, you look at it, if you go to get a hotel room for a night, does it cost you? If you're lucky, a hundred bucks or less?
Where?
Really, you need to lie down.
Where are you sleeping?
If you're lucky, a hundred bucks or less. So when you say a five hundred dollar, a five hundred dollar fee, I don't think that's.
So let's go back to one of the points you brought up, Tim, as we consider this dollar amount. At what point do people just do it not legally? And that was a valid point for a lot of things. And I think that's part of the consideration when you look at significant versus where's that, where is that point?
And I, and I agree with what you're saying to a point. Where are we at right now?
We're nowhere right now. But at some point, someone's been saying, well, I'll just go in. And that was Tim's point.
That's why I asked the question, but if once this is in place, now we can enforce it, well, that's a different circumstance than where we're at now.
Because right now, we can't.
Because now we can't enforce it. There's nothing there.
So. That was accurate. We put a cap on, we get the number that's in that cap and they all live right. And our enforcement options are limited. We now can't send an application or a letter to that person to say, hey, you can do it the right way. We don't have any more spots available. So how do we, like, at some point, we lose that enforcement of having it the legal way, right?
If we get to that point, let's readdress the numbers.
Just do for consideration.
Right?
Yeah.
Agree. I totally agree. But if we get to that point, that these people are doing it legally and they want to buy in and it's working and everything's, then let's up the numbers. Give them five more, give them ten. Well, I don't know.
Well, then you might consider using just that and saying, okay, there's this many big houses. We'll do half of those. You might, you might choose a method that's something like that so that you have some for.
I think that's just a little bit of research on our behalf as to where that, because like I said, I can tell you right now that I've got different numbers than what everybody else is seeing.
I'm just saying, it doesn't seem to matter. If you watch almost anything, there's a price where people will do it properly. You're right. And that's what, that's not what we're trying to encourage. We're trying to, trying to encourage the right way and allow for, allow for those to be an opportunity in our city. And so.
And I think the serious people that want to do it right will pay the reasonable fees if we're reasonable with it. And I guess my point was, let's not make our fees so low that we have to deal with a lot of people that are really on the city.
Well, that may be another question too, because selling a fee to charge, we have to be able to justify where that fee goes to. I don't, I mean, we, we can't necessarily charge a fee just to make money. It has to cover costs. And so I, I don't know where that comes into play. This, we probably need to get that advice too.
Absolutely.
I can raise, I can raise the wages so we can charge them more, but that's.
There's a reason why they're doing short-term rentals. And that's because the revenue that you can generate from a short-term rental far exceeds what you can do for a monthly rental, right? Or a long-term rental. So there's a reason.
There's enough of this going on. Would it be reasonable? And I think Amanda's probably already done some of this, but reach out and find, find what some of the other areas are usually doing.
Yeah, and that's what a lot of this ordinance was based on, the staff report was based on, house expertise, you know, I review our neighboring municipalities. I didn't actually find much references, but I know Oakley has one in place, which is quite similar actually to the ordinance that I have.
I'm talking specifically about.
Oh, I can pull that down for you.
That would be great.
From other, from other like communities.
That would be.
Other cases of resorts.
There's no need for us to start at unbroken ground. This, this ground's been broken by others. Let's see what's successful.
You say, officer.
Thank you.
Perfect. Any other comments on short-term rentals? Well, Amanda, we've got you. You're welcome.
See what you do. There you go.
All right. Let's look at the next agenda item, approval of the August second, twenty twenty-two minutes. Has everybody had an opportunity to review them?
I just thought Tim's tonight.
Thanks, Hal.
Tim just got his comments to you tonight.
So they're not on this yet, but I have them half done in here.
So make the motion with.
Unless there's any other corrections, make it with corrections.
My guess is that some of those you probably already made, but.
Make it off.
I don't know.
Let's.
If nobody else popped them, then.
I'll take a motion then. Oh, Larry wasn't here. I need a motion from one of you two.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes. As a man.
As correct.
Or with corrections.
Yeah.
With corrections.
Okay.
Got a motion? Go ahead, a second. Right, motion and a second. Do we have a vote? You're in.
I'm a yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Linda, yes. Is that all you have?
Larry says Larry.
Yes.
Awesome.
I shouldn't have said.
Yeah.
If it says no, then what happens? Do you have to start over?
No, it would have passed because the. Taking this power didn't.
It just put a pretty.
I got it. Thank you, Larry, for voting correctly. Amanda, do we have any other planning and zoning business?
I have one kind of discussion item that I didn't want to list on the agenda because I didn't want to list a property owner that wasn't aware that we would be talking about. But it's more of a discussion anyway. I think for Dory and I are kind of at a standstill in what to do with the medical plaza and some of the business licenses that have been coming through. And I talked to Rob about this. I've looked at the code for this. And we just don't have much direction. So what we're running into right now is that we've had a lot of business licenses for the medical plaza, some of which are for, so how the building is laid out. Dory and I went into this site tour. They have their individual offices and then in those offices, they have different rooms. And one of those businesses, for example, is a sort of esthetician, I don't even know, esthetician, I guess. And then she subleases a room in her office to nails, people that do nails. And then there's other rooms still available within that office. So what I, what we looked at in terms of the history of this was this was approved as a CUP in two thousand and seven with no real mention on additional parking. Their parking standard would need to be one parking space for two hundred feet, which would make the overall parking requirement for a nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-two square foot building, ninety-seven spots. They were approved at fifty spaces, both in terms of a CUP and then when they came back for a building permit. So where we're at now is the building itself was approved. So where we're at now is the building itself was approved as it stands with the offices for fifty spots. Which isn't enough to cover if we were to go through and park each license, it wouldn't nearly cover what they have. So I guess what we're looking for, because the direction that we got from Rob was to talk to planning commission and maybe the council as well and see what we should do with these licenses that are coming in for subleases and some of these are subleases of subleases. So a room in an office requesting a business license of their own. So and, and part of the, the thought that Dory and I talked about is, you know, is it different than if this original business used each of their rooms for their own business and had clients and employees in there? Or is it, is it more than that and are we generating more parking than what we have to offer? And I know this is kind of a weird thing to throw at you, but we're just hoping for, I guess, some direction.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple of issues, they said they were sharing parking with the Food Town area at one point, but you guys all been in there and driven through. And then we've been lucky so far, but for example, one of the ones upstairs is a yoga studio. Well, she has also, she'll have all those students in there, plus all the different teachers, but luckily they've been scheduling themselves around that. But that's still creating quite a bit of parking. And then as she was saying, here's an office where somebody's doing eyebrows in this one. And then she's got another one doing some nails, nails and wanted hair, and then they decide to put two chairs in there so they can double sublease it. Then there's two people and two clients stuffed into one room. So we just don't know when to stop. So they just keep coming.
They just keep coming at us.
We keep allowing it because we needed to, but it was, it's already not enough parking and so we don't, don't have to stop.
One of Rob's, one of Rob's suggestions at first was for us to talk to the fire department, have the firemen to walk through and see ingress and egress wise if they were okay with what, what was in there. He walked through, we think most of the spaces and said that it was fine.
It was fine.
So we're just kind of, I guess we just.
So one of my questions is, so it's a conditional use permit, but does yoga fall in their conditional use permit? Can they do whatever they want?
They were parked at medical parking, so their, their parking standard is not conditional. Their parking standard is for the building being parked at a medical.
Facility, so in my opinion, they shouldn't be subleasing to entities such as a yoga studio. Or something like that, right?
Well, and back in the day when they paid fifty instead of ninety, what was it? Ninety whatever, that was with nothing upstairs, that was just all empty space upstairs. That was for the offices downstairs only.
Well, actually I think, I just looked at this, Dory, and I think when they originally, when they approved the CUP, it was for a ten thousand square foot building. And then when they went back and approved the building permit, it was for nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two. So they must have known about the upstairs, but I don't find they did the building permit. And the motion from this building permit meeting with the planning commission says it did acknowledge that they had a parking shortage. He asked about adding parking along the side, it was decided that there's adequate parking for the summit medical plaza, but Food Town will have to come up with required parking before they're allowed any additional building permits. Whether or not that happened, I doubt it, but. That's where we're at.
Keep that coming.
So, you know, a couple of thoughts are, sometimes your lease agreement doesn't allow you to sublease and sublease and sublease, right? Like you have to keep it within your own, like it has to just be you. So that would be one, and then I would look at the uses that are allowed in that building and see if, you know, some of the uses are not allowed and if they're not, then that's another thing, cause they're not. Then you could control some parking that way, right? Because I would think a medical plaza or maybe an office space would, an office space wouldn't generate that much parking, right?
Is it just under commercial or is it, does it have a different?
It was under the old, and I just wrote down the parking standard, I didn't write down what it, what the use they were parking it as was, but I believe that it was, I believe that was the medical standard, the medical office parking standard. So I think. I don't know that we can, I don't know that we can limit the uses on what they, I don't know that we can limit the business licenses that, for what is being put in there.
Yeah, I don't know, cause I didn't think of taking it by use, cause I thought it was all commercial, so I thought that was all allowed.
It was all parked at, under the commercial, it was parked at medical office, so I wonder what that was. It was two, it was one parking space for two hundreds, two hundred square feet.
But I mean, if it's not meaning that you, what it, that use.
Because we made the, the gal who just built the red building, we made her come in and she had to park for each use that was within her building.
But I think this other one was grand, what if I grandfathered in any of that, right?
Yeah, that was from.
Yeah, it was old code, but let me ask you a question, so I, I, I see your problem, right? I guess number one is there's never gonna be any more parking available.
No.
Ever, it is what it is, so.
Doesn't he own a little farther on that side or is that not it?
Where?
On the west side of that building?
That's, that's a canal, that's.
It is?
Yeah, yeah, the canal, his, his fence line's right against the canal. It's against the right way, not the canal. There's, there's never gonna ever be any more parking. So what do we do that we can, so are you, so you're gonna deny business? That's, that's hard, I see what you're saying, I don't, I don't know. I don't know what the answer to the question.
I don't know when to stop, that's what Dory and I are getting concerned about is that if we start allowing sub-subleases, where does that end?
Right, see, and that, that would be, I think that would be our only recourse is if you come in for, if you got, if you rented three hundred or eight hundred square feet and you wanted to do a nail salon, that's what you do in that three hundred or eight hundred square feet, right? You can't do, give people poofy lips and whatever else you give them in that, in that area.
But do we have anywhere in our code to regulate?
Did you have spinal?
No.
It's the medical terminology for that.
Do we regulate it that way?
Do we have anywhere in our code that regulates that you can't sublease and sublease?
We don't have anything in our code about that, that's why we're here.
Yeah.
Because we don't, we don't have, we don't have legal direction, I mean, sorry, we have legal direction from always, but we don't have, we don't have the code to back us on saying, we're not gonna issue a business license used on X grounds. It's mostly just Dory and I saying, we're uncomfortable, we're uncomfortable, so we don't know.
We keep approving them and then I have two that have been sitting on my desk for a while because we don't know.
So do we, so do we make an ordinance? Do we put something in our code that, that limits a sublease to a sublease?
We could.
Can we do that? I mean, that's the only way you're gonna get some kind of control over it, right?
Or if you lease a certain amount of space, so there was so many parking spots per space, right?
Yeah.
So many parking spots per, per the building. It wasn't per the space.
Yeah, there was.
So it wasn't based upon square footage?
No, it was half a spot at the very beginning.
It's on the whole.
On the whole building, so.
And nobody ever knew that it would be broken into this many offices and this many spaces with that many buildings, stuff in it.
I think the original design was one, two, three, four, five buildings upstairs.
Are you saying this is your fault?
I made them part of that. It was the, the building, the build, I guess, the building, no, it wasn't. It's creating over people, they're doing the lease.
Absolutely.
It is, well, they're figuring out what it's about.
Do they even have fifty parking spots?
There's, there is.
Well, there's some on the backside.
Yeah, there's some back there.
Yeah, but two or three of those are reserved for the ambulance and COVID patients and whatever.
Rob and I counted it, I, I, I think they were fifty.
That, that's, and that's another one of our concerns, is it is actually a medical place? And if somebody goes there, they need help quick and they need to park.
And do we wanna take?
And they don't wanna take it away from Mr. Poofy Lips.
Mister.
They'll just have, they'll just have to park in the drive-through somewhere.
Perfect.
I don't know.
It's another problem with another problem.
I'm thinking it goes back to the owner.
He's very vague about it and he doesn't know where the, he doesn't know where his, the agreement with Food Town is, he said it wasn't written. And I don't think, I don't know that he, what did he say, did we even talk to him about subleasing that they?
I think we did, I can't remember what we did, but we said about it. I think he said he didn't.
He didn't, I don't think he realized.
I don't think he.
That's what happened.
Yeah, I don't think he was aware of.
The subleasing or the sublease?
Yes. But I don't know that he's, you know, has any stipulation in the lease with these people, but they can't subset it.
I don't think he does.
Or even sublease.
I don't think they would dare because they are cramped against all sorts, but I'm.
Cause Food Town goes clear to that. I mean, the only thing that's, that is that medical plazas, those, that section right there and then that little tiny part there. The rest of it belongs to Food Town slash Ace slash.
Subway.
Subway slash here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Are we getting any negative feedback from Food Town and other business streets there?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet, but, but how many more of these that I approve, when, when will that start happening?
But how do you not, how do you, how do you?
How, how do you, yeah, who gets?
And I don't want, not that I want to, I'm like, I want people to succeed. But I wish, I wish they would come onto Main Street and fix it and make it free and all their businesses there.
Well, that's, that's. I have laundry and we're in legal belt right now.
Well, just think about it.
So.
Just think about it, yeah.
Can you draft, can you draft up an ordinance that would help you?
I have to ask, I have to remember what I said to Rob because I don't know if an ordinance now, it would only affect the ones coming in, right?
Yeah.
Which will still help.
Yeah, cause at least we can stop bleeding.
So I guess if you guys are interested in an ordinance.
Could you put a moratorium on business licenses?
Not all, probably, cause we don't own, I don't think that's what we wanna do, because I think people are trying so hard to.
Yeah.
Succeed.
Anybody that wants to.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need to do that, I just don't wanna create.
When we put a moratorium on that specific site.
We probably ask Rob that, you know, I don't know.
Here's the other thing, could you go to the owner of that business and say, you were allotted fifty parking spots.
You can ask.
However you want to give this up between your tenants.
Ask anybody, probably.
So if you wanna give this little suite or whatever, five of your parking spots, you just tell me how you wanna do this.
So what's the, what's the?
Overly though, it's general.
That's, I mean, that's how I would do it, you have X amount of parking spots.
And you know, luckily his puts up five or whatever, he's not opening up one day or two of the week.
Perfect.
So it's discharge?
They're gone. But we've got like, I've had a number of business licenses, like sixty over two years. And then they'll maybe lease it herself, I've got hers, and then she, all the other people come in. So I've got their six or maybe the more I have.
So maybe, so maybe there's, so maybe there's a different way that this needs to be looked at because we were just talking, that seems to be the trend and that's kind of where the firehouse guy was going, right?
Right.
You can build some offices and then one conference room, you could rent out an individual office for a day or a week or a year and you'd rent out a conference room. As if you're available and that's the kind of businesses you're gonna see. And that may change the parking requirement, that may change several thought processes. I, I don't know, if they're offices, we can park them, you can say it's an office building here. But do you park it as an individual or an overall square footage or like, there's a difference of overall square footage, but I think the problem there's coming up because the Zumba people, the. The nails. With all those falling under the allowed, allowed uses in general commercials, but. Yeah, but when everybody, when everybody that comes in is gonna tell you that it's office because that's the least amount, every developer, that was got this much office in this one for retail. But I, I think if it was like, rent buildings down here, we're at a point where they can't do anymore because they don't have any parking, right? We're saying, you park for this, they still have.
They still do.
They had extra, they had extra.
We just handled that one so differently than how this one was handled.
Yeah.
And so, you know, now we're left with what was approved where.
So it sounds like the, the ordinance against sub, sub, sub might be the best way really.
And also, let's just suggest that we ask Rob if we can tell the owner, you have this many parking spaces. You can use them for your businesses as you wish, just tell us what that is, you have fifty, yeah. You have.
They don't have enough for what they already got.
Yeah.
They don't even have enough.
No, but that's his problem then, right? You were approved for X amount of parking spaces, make it his problem instead of our problem.
So we would say you have fifty spots each of your offices need.
So if you're gonna rent this out, you have to rent this section out for nine to five, this one's midnight to two. I mean, that's.
Well, that's what they're doing already, hopefully they don't even know.
So that would be reciprocal parking, but what I'm saying is.
Well, they're kind of, they have their own yoga schedule, so in one of those spaces, they have a yoga schedule where each, you know, each yoga instructor is getting a business license. And then they, they do a class on a Tuesday and then a Sunday, for example. And so they're doing their own, the yoga, like the yoga studios is not really my concern because they are kind of doing their own reciprocal parking in a way. It sees other offices with rooms that are concerning and I don't know where our limit is. And maybe it's only a couple of the offices, but it's, it's getting to the point where we just don't know. You know, we feel that we've reached the max parking, but we, we have the grounds to stand on and say, no, you can't have a business.
And then we went, when we went to inspect the salon one, they weren't in there, but we can hear talking out of the rooms. So we can actually look in the rooms, how big and how many chairs are in there. But there was also a room with a sign on it that doesn't even have a business license. So we, I don't know.
It's a big black hole.
It's a black hole.
What was the square footage on the building?
Nineteen thousand. Oh, nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two.
That was total, total?
That was with, yeah, that was with the upstairs gross floor area.
So you have one parking spot for every three hundred and ninety-one feet.
And those offices are in that. And so that has an employee in it and a owner of clients.
But do we trust a building owner, I guess, to be involved in deciding parking? Because then.
I would, I mean, in my mind, I would say you, you know, we're running into all of these problems with all of these businesses coming out here. And we, you are responsible, you were approved for fifty parking spots. You get to decide how you wanna use them and if yoga's coming in at night, then that doesn't affect his healthcare center that closes at five, or the dentist that closes at five, right? But make it, I would make it his problem.
Ask Rob if we can do it that way. And if we can start denying licenses after that because they've exceeded it on that.
But how do we know when they've exceeded, I guess, do, do we then have to talk?
Well, they're, they're clearly exceeded it right now.
Right now, we know that, but.
Only, only by square footage, right? Only, only vice square footage, right? That's your point.
I mean, then do we have to reach out to the building owner to say, have you reached your limit? Can we give you another license? Like, well, you know, how do we trust them that he's going to say, no, or yes, I have reached my limit, don't give them a business, you know what I mean?
My family has 50. It's 50. He's so past 50.
He was past 50 on the bottom level.
Couple of years ago, yeah, on the bottom level.
On the bottom level, before they ever leased anything out upstairs, they were past their level.
And he did already try to say that they have reciprocal parking with Foodtown, but it's not in an agreement that's written, so.
If you talk to the Foodtown owner, he will totally tell you that's crap. I know, I was going to say.
Well, that's what these, that's what these, these minutes say, that, that there was an agreement with Foodtown.
There has to be something, because when they came in for the subway. Drive, drives through, they said, we will work with the medical plaza, because we have an agreement with them or something like that.
Well, the medical plaza was parked over against the site of the building. Which wasn't their parking, that was Foodtown's park.
So I guess we can reach out to Foodtown and see.
What other kind of planning and zoning business might you have?
Just that doozy of one, so, thank you.
Any updates we need to know now?
I went to floodplain training last week with FEMA, and that was fun.
That's exciting.
I think, I learned a lot though, which was good, and I, I can't claim ignorance anymore, so.
I have a question for you, how do you get out with what?
You can apply actually for, are you in floodplain? Oh, you can apply for a map change, it's called a.
Floodplains and irrigation.
A letter of map change revision. A lomer, no, it's a lo.
Lomar.
Lomar, and that can get you out of the.
Do they ever approve?
They do.
Because one day it wasn't in there, and then the next day it was.
Yeah, they, they did that whole thing, I don't know if you were, if it's Camus property, but they did that whole thing for Summit County, I think. And that's when a lot of our residents suddenly became in the, in floodplain.
Also, I think you're definitely.
No, yeah, just be everything.
It was a grant or something like.
Just a grant.
Yeah, you can, you can apply for a map revision, you have to get the, you have to get the property. You have to do a hydro, hydro, hydrologic. Yeah, you have to do a survey on it and get that, get that report so that you have an authority on it.
When you're the deputy mayor slash.
Oh, when you're everything. Planner slash.
Awesome, one more motion.
She can do it all.
I think people try to, by space, when they came for the business application, how much square footage do you have? And you already know the amount that you already have on file for that building. And I don't know what recourse we have with the owner, but if he's, you know, 50s what he has, and he's leasing out for more than that, then is he not ultimately responsible for the problem?
I think.
Not us, giving business licenses?
So the problem, I think our, our issue is that we we don't know how to solve where we're at now.
I think once we give a business license for that location, we pretty much accept the condition. I would agree with you, that would be my guess.
You saying, say that again?
I say, I think once we approve a business license for that location, we pretty much accept the condition. In other words, they don't have parking, we can't issue a business license for that location, that person wants a business license. For a different location that has the right on parking, that hasn't stopped them. But for that location, once we approve that business license, I think we're off, we're certainly.
So I don't know that we can go backwards, but I think we can, we can certainly stop the bleeding going forward, you know.
We know, yeah, we know that we can't do anything with what we've already.
Asking the owner to give us square footages for what he's leased and who he's leased it to. Bear that to our business licenses, and there we go.
I don't even know if we need to go back to the owner, we know what's square footage is, we know what the parking spots were allowed, and I can just say no. And when the owner comes in and says, wait a minute, we can say, look, here's what you were allowed, here's the minutes, it says that, we can do that.
Yeah, that's, that's my point. I think we can, I think we can get on the top, it's going to take some effort, but I think we can get on top of that. And then once, once we do, the owner will hopefully engage and do this.
That's kind of where our heads were, but.
That's kind of where we were, yeah, we just didn't know, like.
We couldn't feel, and we, we couldn't feel right making that decision by ourselves, Cory and I.
You have Tim's support. Larry, do they have your support? I have mine too.
One final motion, Prince.
Motion to it, Gary.
Thank you.
You need a second. You need a second.
You don't.
If we don't need a second, why did we do this long time ago?